Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of North Committee of the Hall Meeting. Today is Monday, December 4th, 2023. It's 5:00 PM. Thank you all for being here. We'll start today with an operational item, an item to appear at Items 6 and also 7 tomorrow. And for that, we welcome our Assistant City Administrator and Director of Economic Development, Mr. Jeff Ryder. Jeff, you have the floor. Thank you, sir.
Your Honor, thank you. Good evening, counsel. Tonight, I have an opportunity to present with information to you on an update to the urban renewal plan at I-80. In 2017, you may recall, we updated the urban renewal plan at Interstate 80 to help support the construction and development of the TBK Bank Sports Complex. Last year, actually, wow, two years ago now, February of 2022, we amended that plan. At that time, we brought in the Vinhorst Farm as part of that urban renewal plan area. They had asked to be consented to be in that area, and they wanted to be added to it. So we did so at that time. What we're looking at today would be a second amendment to that urban renewal plan to offer the city some bonding capacity to construct our pedestrian bridge over Middle Road. What we are doing with this update is we are essentially taking a look at one schedule within the urban renewal plan wherein Amendment Number 1, we had given ourselves the ability to bond for using urban renewal bonds or TIF bonds, certain improvements to the area. As you can see here, there's two items grayed out. Those are areas in which we were able to fund through alternative means, whether through our CIP or part of the Interstate 80 and/or the Forest Grove projects. But these other areas, the first two bullet points, we did fund through urban renewal bonds, similar to what we're proposing we do here. The last bullet point you see here, Middle Road, public safety improvements and economic development for a pedestrian bridge at $1.5 million. That is actually the amendment we are making here, giving us the bonding capacity to go up as high as as much as $11 million. Now, the reason we are requesting this amendment tonight and this capacity is because over the course of the last couple of years, we have solicited and applied for grants to the U.S. Department of Economic Development, Iowa Economic Development Authority, and other granting agencies to try to secure funds to support this project, all of which were not successful. On this previous slide, at $1.5 million, when we put this number in here back in 2022, conceptually, we thought that $1.5 million would be the city's outlay to help construct this bridge, and then the rest of the cost would be defrayed by grants. We are now at a point where construction is imminent. We're getting really close. We're getting ready to go through design, and we are going to continue to pursue funding opportunities through other means. But we just can't wait any longer to stay on a construction schedule that keeps us ahead of the I-80 Middle Road interchange, which is our ultimate goal, get this thing constructed before construction of that begins, so all of the contractors are not tripping over each other. So what we'd like to do is propose to you this amendment, which gives us the capacity to potentially bond as much as $11 million to construct that pedestrian bridge. And as you'll see in your packet, we did consult with the taxing entities, Pleasant Valley Schools and Scott County. I spoke with Superintendent at Pleasant Valley Schools. He was not able to come to the consultation, but he is fully supportive of our development out there. He's fully supportive of us providing these alternative transportation sources and this public safety type of avenues we're taking with constructing pedestrian improvements. You'll see the letter from the Scott County Board of Supervisors as well. They always make a note to suggest that their plans always support economic development. But when amenable, we should look at using our taxing authority to construct projects. In this case, knowing that this is a public safety improvement, they were generally supportive of this as well, and they did give us that letter as part of the packet. So with that, ultimately, I do not have anything else. There's no other substantive changes to this amendment. There are no projects from the private sector being contemplated at this time. It is simply giving us the capacity, and our Finance Director, the capacity to issue bonds when necessary.
What ground is being added?
No ground this time, Your Honor. This is simply a financial maneuver to give us the capacity to bond to that level.
Okay. Any questions? Greg?
I apologize. I'm still a little fuzzy here. So what does the actual bridge estimated cost?
Right now, we're estimating it to come in at about $9.5 to $10 million. We set this number at $11 million in case our overages change.
Just the bridge?
The bridge and the trail connectors, yes.
Trail connectors, okay.
So just for a little bit of history on that as well, when we initially applied to the U.S. Department of Economic Development, we anticipated the cost being somewhere in the neighborhood of $6.5 to $7 million. That did not include any trail connectors. When we went to the Iowa Economic Development Authority, they asked us to include trail connectors, and with inflation, the cost was in that $7 million, $7.5 million ballpark, give or take. Today, with inflation, construction costs, design, et cetera, et cetera, we're looking at $9.5 to $10, but we're giving ourselves that little bit of cushion. And I think it's important to note as well, our development agreement with the development on the east side of Middle Road, it's giving us enough TIF increment to backstop this as well. So that's really our backstop to this. It's not a burden on the taxpayers in that regard. It's using our bonding capacity, but we know very confidently, we've talked to the developer, when that project is fully built out, it is going to be north of $85 million in taxable valuation, of which the city will yield 25% day one, when that fully assessed value comes on board. That would be our backstop for this and how we can utilize TIF bonds or urban renewal bonds to finance this.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? Lisa?
When were we, I forgot, as far as starting to go in?
Sorry?
When was the bridge gonna start to be going in?
Yeah, so we're pretty well on schedule with where we originally had thought. What our goal was is to have the development, by and large, the commercial development east of Middle get.
Okay.
Then we were going to come in and construct this after the roundabouts, the Middle Road and Forest Grove intersection was done. We would do this bridge, and then after that, I-80 and Middle's interchange would be done, so as to keep all those contractors separate from each other and not stubbing their toes.
Okay. That's I can remember.
Other questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So just to clarify, that 25% of the TIF money is going to be enough money to pay off these bonds if we need to bond for the 11 million. That will be enough money to pay off the bonds, and like you previously said, it won't be a burden on the regular taxpayers.
Yeah, actually, it's with the coming of the new indoor facility that was supposed to be outdoor ball fields, which is now going to be indoor, they are estimating that assessment to be about $12 million. With the addition of ORA, the developer anticipates that to be about $45 million in that building. Those two buildings alone are outside what we had anticipated when we did the DA for a minimum assessment amount on that property. But just by virtue of what we had put into the development agreement, there would have been almost enough money to cover this just on its own. But now that we have these added two facilities plus whatever else comes, there's going to be enough increment generated to help support us backstop that.
Jason, do you have something you want to add?
Just to be real clear on that, at today's debt service costs, interest rates, the increment we're anticipating, and again, we're trying to be conservative when we estimate what increment is available to the city. And Jeff did a great job of kind of outlining why we're doing this. But by getting this capacity in the urban renewal area to issue urban renewal bonds, that is the trigger that allows us to use TIF to offset that cost. If we had just issued GO bonds, which we had planned to do in last year's CIP, we could not use that TIF increment to pay off those bonds. To your question, Alderman, Sexer, the increment that I would anticipate, and again, we're trying to be conservative in our estimates, will not completely cover the debt service, but will largely offset the debt service on these bonds, probably to the tune of about, I would say right now, 75% at today's interest costs. So there will be a little portion of the debt service levy that's necessary, but certainly a huge project that we're going to be able to get done largely paid for through the increment in the urban renewal area.
And I think to build upon that as well, the good thing is that TIF bonds, urban renewal bonds, they don't count against your debt margin, if I'm not mistaken, Jason.
That's right.
So these bonds will not be counted against our debt margin.
Other questions? All right, this will appear on your regular agenda tomorrow night, Items 6 and 7. If you have a question over the next 24 hours or 25 hours or so, you can talk to Jeff and Jason. All right, we move to our consent agenda items. The first one is Item C. Greg and Nick grabbed me, and I think Mr. Palczynski would like to be heard.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Given my standing with this project for the school out there, I would like to make a motion to pull this consent item onto the main agenda for tomorrow night and also recuse myself from the discussion and the vote for the remainder of the evening for this particular consent agenda.
I'd like to second that motion, and I'd also like to recuse myself because I am also heavily involved in that project. So just to make sure there's no question about it, I'm going to recuse myself as well.
We have a motion to second to remove this item from consent and add it to the regular agenda. Let's take a vote. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Okay, we'll take it up as a regular agenda item, and we'll just kind of figure out where you guys want to put it. I assume maybe 14, but whatever you want to do. So let's have our discussion or our presentation on the item. For that, we welcome our Community Development Director, Mr. Mark Hunt. Mark, you have the floor.
Your Honor, thank you. Counsel, thank you. Trying to go through these cases for you tonight pretty quick is pretty good projects. I think you'll like what you've just seen here. Turn your attention to 6822 Hopewell Avenue. That's near Hopewell and Criswell intersection thereof. There's going to be a lot going on in this property. We're going to talk today just about the school portion. There are plans in the future for our church as well, but we're limiting our discussion to the site development plan just for the school. Would be a private parochial school, be on Lot 1 of Our Lady of Lord St. John, being the addition. It will be a pre-K daycare and K-8 school as well. And I did mention a future church is contemplated. You should be familiar with this area. Here's Hopewell, and here's Criswell, just to orient you. As always, I'd like to check in on our future land use and our zoning. They are in alignment, so our future land use allows the zoning that is there, and the zoning that is there allows the use that is proposed, which is good. Site contains front yards on Hopewell and Criswell, so we have a corner lot. It's a pretty large lot, so we don't have a lot of issues with setbacks and things like that. We have two curb cuts to access the property, one from the south off of Hopewell, it's kind of a winding private drive here, and one directly off Criswell that goes right into the parking lot. There's a service walk connecting. It's a little hard to see, but if you look at the packet, you'll see there's a service walk connecting here. And we don't have a service walk off Criswell because we don't have a sidewalk on Criswell as of yet. Stormwater detention is provided at various locations on the property. There's some here, a little on this piece of property, and some over here as well. Again, lots of ground to work with. I will point out that you see a field here. This is really just an open field, not a stadium, so it's not a seated stadium or anything like that. This is just grass that's going to be marked for kids' practices and things like that. Here's your building. It's about a 61,000 square foot building, has this white piece in the middle. That's an interior courtyard, so it's a grassy area. Two or four off-street parking spaces, including some drop-off places as well. Really good job on coordinating drop-off pickup. They have three locations to stack and do drop-off. So kind of depending on the age of the student and which part of the school that student needs to enter, they'll be directed to drop-off or stacking locations relative to their location in the building. So there's one here, perhaps for older students because they can easily walk across the green area. One may be closer to the building for the younger students, and one kind of a midway distance here. Nice jobs designing that. Lots of trees, 194 tree factors spread throughout the property, additional shrubs beyond our requirements as well. They have that 188 spot that we want to see added to get them to the right number. They've added that already, so we've got a new plan that's in there. Here's some elevations, showing you kind of a traditional brick school building look. Has a tower that does meet our height restrictions, so tower is allowed. Looks good. We do have a positive staff recommendation. It was also met with a positive recommendation, counsel from planning and zoning on November 13th. I would say that the dumpster area being located and labeled correctly has occurred, and so has the required ADA spot. So those conditions, while part of recommendation, have already been met. I would be happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Jerry, then Frank.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the drop-off, you know, this is going to be several hundred kids, you know, with no sidewalks, why, obviously, they're all going to be walking. So when they come out onto Hopewell or when they come out onto Criswell, do we, are we okay with the traffic pattern there to make sure that we don't have any unusual conflict?
Yes, I think I understand what you're getting at. We do have the 10-foot pedestrian trail, bike path here, so if there are students that are walking out of the school, they can use that. We don't have that in place on Criswell yet, but maybe in the future, that will be something we can add. And then having two points of access or egress, it does hopefully prevent long queues from occurring to get into the building. You probably use the queue that most aligns with where your student needs to go, so hopefully that helps. Beyond that, I can't tell you for sure how it'll function, but it looks like a good plan.
Thank you. Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there any improvements planned by the time this school is open for Criswell?
Criswell does have a reconstruction plan, but it will still be with the ditches as it's designed now, so it's not going to change the profile of Criswell, if you will. The budgeting and planning process to add that sidewalk and gutter, curb and gutter, it would be something the council would have to approve in future budgeting.
Okay, to go along with that, I would highly recommend that there be no parking on Criswell because I don't think there's room for it.
There's no room for it. It's just one either way.
I don't think it's allowed under code.
No.
But I can double-check that. I'd be glad to.
Because I know how things.
Same on Hopewell. There's not room for it on Hopewell. There'd be no way to park on one of those streets.
Questions?
Lisa, go ahead. The road coming in or the drive-in from Hopewell, is it one-way? Did you say it?
No, that's not a one-way. No, that's a two-way. That'd be a two-way drive.
Any other questions for Mark? This is labeled as Consent C. We've removed it and placed it on the regular agenda, so you'll see it there tomorrow. Let's move to Consent D as in dog. Mark?
Case 23077. This is at 5235 Competition Drive. It's going to be very familiar to you just in a second. I think you'll recognize it. We call this little piece of land, staff, we refer to it as the island out of TBK. It's kind of surrounded on four sides by roads. The spot in question is this little corner here. The applicants stand here with Frontier Hospitality Group. It's a site development plan for a four-story, 86-unit hotel. Talked about this coming here to this location for quite a while. It's a 2.4-acre lot. There should be 91 parking spaces. Board adjustment did grant some variances so we get the parking right with this dual front yard that they have here because they're kind of a corner lot. So I'll show you that in a minute. And just to remind you, we've got land use and zoning that align, and they align with the proposed use, which is always good. And to give you just a mental image of how this all fits together before we go right into the site plan, here's that island piece I talked about. Here's where TBK is going to be, having the IR&amp;T Golf Complex, the indoor sports facility, the new one. ORA would be here, and then this little piece is where the hotel will come in. It's kind of the last piece on the island, so that island's kind of filling now. Here's your site plan. It does get a little tricky to develop on this site because we have the location of the ingress and egress kind of constrain the property a little bit. We have to push those up because of the roundabouts. We don't want people stopping right after a roundabout. We want that to flow more freely, so we push these entrances here and here. We put entrance here, it kind of pushes everything on the property to be developed farther to the north. Here's your building footprint. You're going to have an awning here for pickup and drop-off, so this is kind of the front of the building facing to the north, if you will. I did mention the two curb cuts. Their stormwater detention is provided off-site. Remember, we have regional stormwater detention out here, so we're doing it regionally. You won't see that on the site plan. You've got your dumpster location. You do have a service walk to get you from the sidewalk here into the property. It's not real clear, but it's right about this location. Talked about some parking, 91 parking spaces. We did allow them to encroach, but parking here and here, this is kind of nose-in parking, if you will. Easier to see on this diagram. Allowing them to do that made the site developable. They were being constrained by the location of the entrances due to the roundabouts, but they also really compensated with a lot of nice landscaping up and around the building, above and beyond what will be required by code, so we're happy to see that. 19.5 tree factors, they've met that and done more with the other landscaping as well. Here's your elevations, again, four-story building. Kind of that tan-blue-brown vibe is getting popular and being built a lot out there, so it's going to match the surrounding buildings. It's going to look very much like part of the overall site. We have a positive staff recommendation. We also received a positive recommendation for planning and zoning on November 15th. I would be happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Greg?
Is this hotel in Lewa or to the west of the TBK, there was a kind of a plant, site development, not a site development plan, but a discussion about a hotel?
Another hotel on this property.
Is that another hotel?
I don't know that it's in Lewa, but I don't know the background on that.
Okay.
Jeff, you may step in, but I think the second hotel may still be contemplated. There may still be a spot there, but this was part of the development agreement for the east side.
Yeah, so both the west and the east were to have one hotel on each side. Any additional hotel properties would be in addition to what's required by the development agreement. And to the question or comment, we do anticipate seeing potentially another one, but they're not bound by our contract or development agreement to construct one.
But if they do, it's within the $5 a night.
Absolutely, 100%.
It all falls into the $5 per night development agreement, whatever side, and there is now a third hotel that is still being talked about on the west side.
West side. Any hotels that are in the urban renewal area, any hotels in that urban renewal area that we do a development agreement with are subject to that $5 term.
Thank you.
Other questions? Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor. With all the amenities that are going to be across the street, do we have a pedestrian safe walkway to get from one, from the hotel across the street to IR&amp;T and all those other things that'll be coming online there?
Yeah, so we will have normal intersection crossings, just like we would at any city intersection, so we encourage people to use those. We also have the sidewalks that are going to be part of Competition Drive here, so I feel confident that we do have the appropriate.
But there's not going to be any street lights out there, right? On this little piece of Competition Drive from one?
You mean lights or intersection lights?
Intersection lights, right.
I'm not sure on that. I don't think so because we don't want that.
Right, yeah, we have the.
The roundabout thing.
Okay, all right. Perfect, thank you.
And obviously, the new pedestrian bridge, once we put that in, is a very safe pedestrian way to get across.
Get over the west side.
Correct.
But you got to be able to cross safely to get there, so.
Okay. Championship or competition, whatever name that road is, is your point.
Yeah, right, correct. Just getting across that Competition Drive to the other stuff, then we can use the bridge.
Any other questions on Consent Item D? All right, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda.
Full move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take that up as Consent D. Let's move to Consent E, please.
Mark? Thank you, Your Honor. This project is literally a stone's throw across the street from where we were just talking, maybe to the point that was just made by the council. Lot 2, FG80 Holdings, fourth addition, this is a site development plan for your review. We were just talking about the hotel going here. This is a multi-tenant retail commercial, kind of unknown exact user, but it would fit within the zoning uses that are allowed, so it's kind of on spec. Four units, 6,000 square feet to fit on this piece of property here. If you build anything now that's any type of commercial structure, it has drive-throughs, so there'll be a drive-through located on each side. The proposed use is not specifically identified. It is more of a spec building. Kevin Kilner is the applicant. Just a quick double-check on our land use and zoning, and we'll give it a thumbs up and move on. Here's your building, your 6,000-square-foot building. These are your drivelines for your stacking, and they're quite large, so you're getting plenty of stacking. You have to have six. I think you'll get more than that easily in there for your drivelines. We've got dumpster location. The thing that's interesting about this site is that to get into it, you come in either down here to the south or up here from the north, so it doesn't have its own driveway because of where it's located on that curve. We wouldn't want that to happen, so coming in through this entrance or coming in, go onto this private drive, and then come in down to the south. That's a better picture for you. There's a service walk connecting the development to a bike path, Competition Drive, and there's a screened dumpster location in the southeast corner of the parking lot. So this kind of shows you how those stacking would work, kind of coming in through here and entering, or even if you came in from the top, you could still come down and work away. If you came in up here, you could still come down and work away this way as well. And then similarly up here, this is the stacking in the north. Most of your landscaping is going to occur kind of out on this pointed piece of the lot, which makes sense. That lawn is not really developable the way it's pinched in there between those two, those private road and the public roadway. So you have nice landscaping out here, 103 factors, those were all met, and some additional landscaping above and beyond what's required by code, which is nice to see. Here's your elevations, again, 6,000-square-foot building, probably going to be divided into four units, roughly. That's whatever users come have to fit in within the group zoning district. We have a positive staff recommendation. We also have a positive recommendation for the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 15th. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I was glad to see a service walk on it. You know, obviously, green space didn't get the word, but is that service walk going to match up with the service walk from the hotel? It would seem to me to make common sense for that to match up.
Of course, the hotel is pointing to the north. Service walk to the hotel connects up here, so no, it doesn't align to the hotel service
So could you show the service walk again? It's not on here. There we go. So the service walk's right there.
Yeah, and the hotel service walk is pointing to the north because the front of the hotel faces to the north.
So I guess it would seem to me that the hotel guests are going to be walking across to the retail, and you might, they might want to consider making the sidewalks line up.
Yeah, that's not a requirement I can.
I know it's not a requirement. It's just a.
Making pedestrians.
A common sense recommendation.
Use the sidewalk system in the intersections.
Well, people are going to walk there, whether there's an intersection or not, whether there's a crosswalk or not, they're going to walk there.
Nick?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I know the focus is on this parcel. What is the parcel just to the south of this? This is sort of a whited-out rectangle. Is that buildable for future use?
Yeah, that's part of the overall.
Or is that, that encompasses in this as well?
Yeah, I'm trying to find an image for you. Might show you something. This could be future development here.
Okay.
But it's Lot 1, it's 6,390 square feet or about 1.5 acres.
Okay, it is. Okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate that. It's helpful.
Questions? All right, this is Consent E. I'd like to entertain a motion that it remain the same.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up on Consent Agenda tomorrow. Let's move to Consent G. Mr. Hunt, don't go anywhere. You're up again.
Well, thank you, sir. I do have an update just for council, kind of refresh on the we call these COMD, related fees, but they're really development-related fees that are issued through or taken in through COMD. They're not all under the zoning code, but we're kind of the one that handles them the most. Total background, at the budgeting session of 2023, 24, we talked about doing some review of our fees related to development and increasing those for a couple of reasons. They haven't been increased for decades properly. Inflation, budget constraints from the state as well. So we did a memo to this council February 10th with how we might do that. That's kind of over here, this is a small excerpt from that memo, how these might look. We talked about it in September, talked about it in maybe September at the committee of the whole. And thought that maybe for the sewer connection fees, we want to do something a little more than we were originally talking about, maybe a phased approach. In November of 2020 or November of 23, we did provide you that memo with how we would do the sewer specific fees. That's over here. Sewer connectivity fees would be phased in over a three-year period. And so we're not ready to bring all this up to council. I think we've kind of gone over it a few times, kind of set the plan at at budgeting, gave you a memo to put some meat on the bone on how it might look. Took a deeper dive into sewer connection fees, we've got those ready for you. And so we'll bring bring these in large chunks relative to the the spot, the existing code. And so today, if you will, we're going to bring forward the electrical mechanical fee increases. Let me just talk about those real quick. And we're setting the public hearing specifically, so we're not voting on those, but I want to explain them to you. Some of you are probably familiar with this, maybe others aren't. But one of the things that we had a really low fee for, but it's actually really costly for us, is temporary electrical service, temporary electrical service and temporary heat. They were like 15 or 16 dollars for these. And what they are is is literally temporary connections to to homes for, to benefit the builder or developer while they're constructing that home. So your homes are all connected to gas, electricity right now, with a permanent connection, it looks something like this. Here's a picture from Mid-American. During that construction phase, because that's not there, they're going to mount a post for electricity, if you will. They're going to mount a post, they're going to dig a pit if it's underground utility. They're going to dig a pit, connect to that post. The post has to be stable and identifiable and, you know, not knocked over by the next construction truck that pulls into the to the yard, which happens a lot. And we have to go up there and inspect that, just like we have to do the inspection on the on the final connection to the house. And that 15 or 16 dollars, we were way under underfunded on. And then we did not have a fee for temporary heat inspections. So what we're bringing to you now is the permit review fee to to review this plan when it comes in for the temporary electrical will be $50. And then we have to do temp heat will also have a fee of $50. That was zero before. So didn't even make sense why electrical was was $15 and heat was zero. So now I think we're closing a gap that was there. It's reasonable, it will keep us from having to do maybe run out, look at work that for $15 or just to throw it up and say, hope it passes. Maybe it's $50 range, I think it'll bring us a little more honesty from our from our friends out in the field. So we recommend approval of these fee increases when they come up to you for a vote. Again, we're just setting the public hearing, and I'm going to start bringing to you chunks of these type of fee increases at subsequent meetings relative to the different parts of code that they align to. So sewer connection fees could be next, if you will.
Questions for Mark? Okay, this is on Consent as G. I'd like to entertain a motion that it remain the same.
Full move, second.
Those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? We'll take it up on Consent. Let's move to Consent H, please. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, I think I'm done, sir, I think I can step away.
You killed them both there? Nothing else on H? Any questions on H? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
G and H are the same thing.
Yep. Entertain a motion to set this public hearing on Consent H, please. All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll set those two public hearings. We have removed item C. Are there any other remaining Consent Agenda items any particular council member would like to discuss or ask questions about at this time? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that all other items that are set forth on Consent remain there for tomorrow night's consideration.
Full move.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, I have nothing to be added for tonight's meeting. Anybody else here? All right, let's move then to our executive session. This is pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5, Sub 1, Sub I, for the purpose of discussing the performance evaluation of the city attorney. Can I entertain a motion to move into executive session, please?
Full move.
Second.
We will by roll call vote enter the session. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
All right. At this time, we will enter executive session. Turn off our feed, start a recorder.